Sacramento County Planning Commission for June 26th. Will you please call the roll?
Yes, Members Borja.
Here.
Raythal.
Here.
Corona Sabaniano.
Here.
Tatisi. And Wong.
Here.
And we do have a quorum.
If you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And will you please make the announcements for this evening?
Yes, the county fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. To make a public comment, please complete a speaker request form and hand it to the clerk, that's me, and the chairperson will call your name when it's your turn to make a comment. You may also send a written comment to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the record.
Will you please call item number one?
And for item number one this evening, we have a general plan amendment, community plan amendment, rezone, tentative subdivision map, special development permit, exception from Title 22.24.630, and design review located at 6331 Filbert Avenue approximately 700 feet north of Greenback Lane in the Orangevale community, and the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Good evening.
Oh, is this on? Yeah. May I have a PowerPoint? Can we try it again?
And Metro, can you pull up the presentation, please?
Thank you. All right. Good evening Chair Raythal and members of the commission. My name is Kimber Gutierrez. I'm with Planning and Environmental Review, and I will be presenting the Blossom Ridge project to you all tonight. Next slide. Oh, can I do it? Awesome. Okay. The project site is located at 6331 Filbert Avenue approximately 700 feet north of Greenback Lane in the Orangevale community. The subject site is 9.4 net acres in size and contains an orchard with a single-family residence on the northeastern portion. In addition to the residence, the site contains a 2,500 square foot concrete pad from a former barn as well as an 850 square foot farm stand located on the southeastern corner of the site. Existing chain link fencing is located along the site's boundaries, and the majority of the vegetation on site consists of rows of fruit and nut trees as well as containing a number of non-native and native trees around the residence and along the perimeters of the parcel. The site has been operating as a commercial orchard since the 1930s. The subject site is zoned agricultural residential to acres or AR2. Surrounding land uses of the proposed project area include single-family residential to the northwest and across Filbert Avenue to the east. The residences to the north and east are zoned RD2 with the residences to the west zoned RD3. South adjacent to the subject site is a church within the Greenback special planning area. As stated, the site has been operating as an orchard since the 1930s. There have been no prior entitlement applications or code enforcement violations on the project site. The proposed project was originally submitted in May of 2020 and involved rezoning the subject parcel from AR2 to RD3 and RD5 zones. It also involves subdividing the parcel into 43 single-family residential lots. On April 6 of 2021, the Orangevale CPAC met by virtual teleconference to hear and consider the project as an informative workshop item. At the workshop, the applicant and owner provided more historical context explaining that the subject site was an orchard that had been in the family for over 100 years but was no longer producing and therefore needed a new use. 16 members of the public spoke in opposition to the project. The majority of those in opposition expressed that the proposed zoning of RD3 and RD5 was too dense for the surrounding area and the preference would be for the entire site to be RD2. Concerns raised also included an increase in traffic, additional parking on Filbert Avenue, losing the rural character of Orangevale. The CPAC did agree with the comments that were stated and encouraged the applicant to revise the project. The applicant did revise the project request in response to the feedback provided and to include RD2, RD3, and RD4 zoning districts and to subdivide the property into 32 single-family lots. This reduced the number of lots by 11 and created a lower density housing project, so from 4.5 units per acre to 3.4 units per acre. Further refinement to the zoning boundaries and related lot lines to conform to density allowances were also made late in the review process, and I will go over the specifics of those in the following slides. The applicant is requesting a general plan amendment, community plan amendment and rezone, tentative subdivision map, special development permit, exception from Title 22, and design review. The general plan amendment is requested to change the general plan land use designation of the property from ag rez to low-density residential. The community plan amendment and rezone is requested to change the land use designations from AR2 to RD3 and RD4. This is where further refinement to the zoning boundary lot lines occurred late in the review process, specifically Lot 2's. Lot lines were reconfigured to meet RD3 lot size requirements instead of RD4, and the proposed zoning district for lots 1 and 2 were revised to RD3. So the existing residence was the one that had the RD2 zoning that was later changed to RD3. The tentative subdivision map is requested to divide the subject parcel into 32 single-family residential lots. The special development permit and exception from Title 22 were also identified as necessary after the project was presented to the CPAC for a formal recommendation. The side street yard setback and the mutual water company provider were identified on the materials presented to the CPAC but were not captured in the details of requests, so they are captured here. And then lastly, a design review is requested to determine substantial compliance with the design guidelines. Here's the rezone exhibit. Approximately 9.57 gross acres is proposed to be rezoned from the existing AR2 zoning district to the proposed 5.77 acres of RD3 and 3.8 acres of RD4. Here is the tentative subdivision map. The 5.77 acres of RD3 zoned property would be composed of 17 lots along the northeast and west perimeters of the site as well as the existing single-family residence on Lot 1 and four lots along the southern portion of Filbert. The 3.8 acres of RD4 zoned property would be composed of 15 lots in the central area of the subject site and along the southern perimeter. No modifications to the existing single-family residence are proposed, and all other existing structures on the site are proposed to be removed. The proposed lots would range in size between 8,500 square feet and the largest being 26,523 square feet. Here's the conceptual site plan. The subdivision is proposed to be served by a public street labeled on the map as Wickstrom Way. The project is conditioned to improve Filbert Avenue, which would include curb and gutter, a landscape buffer, a detached sidewalk, and a utility easement. All internal streets on the proposed subdivision are proposed to meet minimum improvement standards, and this particular exhibit was provided to show and illustrate the buildable portion of each lot as well as the potential locations for future driveways and on-street parking stalls. So this does show the potential for 64 onsite parking via driveways and 73 on-street parking for a total of 137 stalls to support the subdivision. In existing to the residence on Lot 1, the lot would also contain a stormwater detention basin to minimize impacts associated with runoff. A preliminary drainage study was reviewed and approved by the Department of Water Resources, and the drainage study did indicate that the project would not result in adverse impacts to neighboring properties. With the site being an orchard, there are 875 orchard trees on site as well as a variety of native and non-native trees around the residence and along the perimeters of the parcel. There are 20 native trees on the subject site, three of which do not meet the minimum requirements for protection, and six native trees are proposed for removal. All of the orchard trees are proposed to be removed in addition to 12 non-native trees, which would go along with the construction of Wickstrom Way at Filbert. All existing fencing along the perimeter of the project is proposed to remain with no replacement fencing proposed along the project site perimeter or between the proposed lots at this time. And then lastly, water and sewer services would be provided by the Orangevale Water Company and the Sacramento Area Sewer District respectively to all lots. An initial study and mitigated negative declaration was prepared pursuant to the California Environmental Quality Act for this project and released for public review on November 2 of 2022. During the public review period, two letters were received from public agencies and four comments were received from members of the public. A response to comments has been prepared and is included in the report package. From the comments received, a revised initial study MND was prepared due to minor revisions in the project description that I went over and to reference and discuss the most current drainage study that was prepared for the project. The revised document was released for public review on February 24 of 2023. The environmental analysis discussed impacts to those listed on the screen and concluded that the project would result in less than significant impacts to most of them. However, in regards to biological resources and greenhouse gas emissions, the document did conclude that it would be a less than significant impact with the implementation of mitigation measures. So a mitigation monitoring and reporting program has been prepared for the project to ensure compliance with those mitigations. The Orangevale CPAC met on April 19 to hear and consider this project in 2022. Following the staff and applicant's presentations, the CPAC members asked a number of clarifying questions on the design of the subdivision as well as public improvements on Filbert Avenue. A number of the public members made verbal comments, including, and some of the comments included increased density, traffic, parking, and crime. The increase in density appeared to be the main concern across all of the comments and those who spoke on the project. There is a large opposition to the change in zoning to RD3 and RD4, and there was a desire from the community for RD2 zoned property at a maximum. Another noted concern was the amount of traffic and parking generated from the proposed project. Staff indicated that while there will be an increase in the number of trips due to the increase in the number of lots, a traffic study was not warranted given the project would generate less than 1,000 daily trips. Drainage and water supply concerns were also raised during the meeting, but as I stated earlier, a drainage study was prepared and was reviewed by the Department of Water Resources. Residences directly adjacent to the site shared concerns about privacy and potential for two-story homes. And then lastly, the owner was questioned on their intent to develop the property themselves or to sell to a residential developer. The owner did indicate during the meeting that they will be selling to a residential developer. Following the public comments and those deliberations, the CPAC did vote to recommend the board deny the requested entitlements, including all, citing all of the public comments that I just went over. The project was reviewed by the Design Review Advisory Committee on June 23 of 2022. The DRAC members did express concerns over future grading of the lot when the project is moving on to the development phase. They commented that to the greatest extent possible, they would like to see future homes designed in a way to be compatible with the natural terrain and the topography of the site, and they also noted that the proposed density seemed appropriate and that the proposed subdivision matched the surrounding context in regards to circulation and density. They did recommend that the board find the project in substantial compliance with the design guidelines, provided that future home designs be reviewed by the Design Review Administrator to ensure that they are designed in a way to be compatible with the natural terrain. It was noted during the meeting, and I'll note now, that a condition was not necessary because the zoning code does require home review of, home design review prior to building permits immitil for this type of subdivision, more than 20 lots and zoned to RD7 or less. So the Planning Commission did meet on March 27 of this year to hear and consider this project. Three members of the public did speak at the hearing, and a number of written comments were received, which were included in your report today. All were opposed to the project. At that meeting, after deliberation, you all voted to approve the resolution and recommend the approval of the balance of entitlements requested to the board. However, following the meeting, staff did receive notification that members of the public were unable to make telephone comments, given to an error on the noticing materials had the wrong number listed. So due to that noticing error, the project is required to be re-noticed and reheard by the Planning Commission for a recommendation to the board. The project was scheduled to go before you all on May 22. However, on May 5, a meeting was held at the Divine Savior Parish, which is the south-adjacent church to the project site. Attendees of the meeting included members of the church community, Supervisor Sue Frost and her staff, adjacent neighbors to the project site, the applicant team, as well as representatives from Planning and Environmental Review and Department of Water Resources. The main discussion at that meeting involved the drainage study and the drainage between the project site and the adjacent properties, specifically the church, as well as two properties to the north. Following discussion, it was determined that the applicant team would prepare conditions of approval to address the concerns raised, and the project was continued to allow time for that process. So with this staff report, we do have draft conditions included for your review and for your comment, and recommendation on whether they should be included as part of the package to the board. If that is the case, then we would be then finalizing including the conditions in the findings and conditions to be considered by the board at a later date. Although the CPAC recommended denial, the proposed project can be found consistent with applicable county plans, including the general plan, community plan, and zoning code as conditioned. With the implementations of mitigation measures identified in the environmental document, potential impacts would be reduced to a less than significant level. The project is compatible with surrounding zoning and land uses and found consistent with the design guidelines by the DRAC. Lastly, the proposed project would be creating new housing opportunities to meet the county's diverse needs. It would not be eliminating public opportunities for people to pursue agricultural activity in the Orangevale community. For these reasons, staff does recommend approval of this entitlement package with the attached findings and conditions. If you would like me to read through all of the recommendations, I can, or if I need to explain the different approvals.
I think we're pretty clear on those. Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions for staff this evening? As far as the new conditions that are proposed, staff has reviewed those and is supportive of those conditions?
Yes. So after we received them, we, there was a couple back and forth with the applicant and the church and the neighbors. Once we kind of got to a final version, we, the Department of Water Resources and myself did review those conditions and made some additional edits, so you are seeing the conditions after all of those reviews.
Thank you. Other questions for staff this evening?
Just a quick minded question, and thank you for a very thorough presentation. Were there any other comments that were brought by Supervisor Frost or her staff at the meeting that added to the conversation or any feedback that were provided by the supervisor?
Supervisor's office was more in the facilitation role, I would say. The primary focus of the meeting was on drainage because that's the representatives we had from the county. I know there was some subsequent discussions that were wanting to occur with Department of Transportation on the traffic piece. I've been checking in with them, but I haven't heard that that subsequent meeting has occurred.
Thank you. Other questions for staff this time? All right. Thank you, Ms. Gutierrez. At this time, we'll invite the applicant up. And if you have more members of your team that are going to answer questions, we'll get everybody sworn in at once.
Andy's ready. And the appropriate responses, I do. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give this commission is the truth, so help you God? If you do not swear, do you so firm?
I do.
Okay. And if you would state your name for the record and make the statement, I have been sworn.
Jim Wiley with Taylor &amp; Wiley, and I have been sworn.
Thank you.
And here on behalf of the applicant. And staff did a great job of presenting the project. We did a presentation previously, so I'm not going to go through that again, but would note that we were pleased to work through with the neighbors and the church conditions that we are in agreement with, and so we would ask that you adopt those with the project. And we would like to have any time to address any comments or concerns that come up this evening at the end of the hearing. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. But it looked like you didn't have any from staff, so I doubt you have any from me.
Questions for the applicant? I got one for you. Before it came up that there was going to be a gap in the sidewalk between the property that's being developed and in the north, and there are a lot of schools there and a lot of pedestrians that could be using that road, and I had asked you guys to maybe look at, just being the good neighbor and looking at what do you do with that couple of houses that are non-conforming, that are zoned AR2 to the north of the current residence?
And, yeah, because we don't own those properties, those property owners would have to be willing to give the frontage in order to do that. We have breached with the Department of Transportation. There are funding mechanisms out there for grants for complete streets and for getting sidewalks to schools, so we're hoping that they are looking into that, but it's really beyond our ability to force the neighbors to give up that property.
Sure, I understand, but we could ask them instead of forcing them, right?
Yeah, yeah. No, and again, we will continue to work with DOT, just as there's supposed to be a meeting with that same group with some representatives of DOT, so we'll raise that again with them when we have that meeting.
Thank you. Other questions for Mr. Wiley this evening? All right. Thank you so much.
Okay, thanks.
At this time, we're ready to open public comments. We're going to start with those in chambers. And I think I only have, oh, I've got a couple. If there's any other folks that are in chambers this evening that want to address the commission on item number one, fill out one of these nifty little forms and bring it up to Lydia here. We'll start with Ed Pucci this evening.
Thank you. My name is Ed Pucci. I am chairman of the Campus Development Committee for Divine Savior Parish. And as Ms. Gutierrez commented, we have had meetings, and I want to acknowledge and thank Supervisor Sue Frost's office and her staff for coordinating, facilitating those meetings. In that meeting, we did come to agreements with the developer, with the applicant, and those agreements are in the attachment, I think it's attachment 15, if I'm correct.
That's correct.
Yes. Attachment 15, and the agreement that is in your package as attachment 15 is the agreement that we reached regarding the drainage issue on the south properties that I had commented on back in March. And I did also want to confirm that we did have a conference, a video conference with the Department of Transportation, and they did explain to us their process in reviewing the traffic and so on and so forth. I would urge the applicant, or at some point the developer, to speak with and try and reach some agreement with the adjacent property owners to the north so that that gap in the sidewalk can be rectified. It'll also improve the drainage as well from the properties to the north. So other than that, I have no further comments, but I do want to thank the staff, the folks from the environmental department were there, and the water resources department as well, and they were very cooperative and very helpful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. Appreciate your time. Next, we've got Doug Elliott.
Thank you for bringing up the part about the, to the north, the two houses at the north, the sidewalks. That's one of the things I want to bring up. Yeah, I was with all the meetings I had with the church and stuff like that. I am a house to the north. I have Lot 4, 5, and 6 behind me. I mean, it's, I'm resigned to the fact that it's going to get done. I mean, I would like to, would have liked to seen half-acre lots because half-acre lots, you can still have livestock and horses or whatever if you want to raise pigs. Orangeville is a big 4H community, but my concern is more about the traffic, which, like I says, the developer really can't do anything, that's more the Department of Transportation. I think Filbert Avenue needs to be re-looked at because there is plenty of streets, I mean, plenty of foot traffic from students on that street. So hopefully, the developer can work with the county and getting that widened somehow and also maybe just fixing the streets. Also, I want to thank the owner and his team. They did reach out. They're very cooperative with, working with us and their church. Most of our concerns have been addressed. My biggest concern is, you know, two-story houses behind me. Since I'm the only house that will have three houses behind me, I'm hoping that, you know, they choose at least two of those houses to make single stories. That's not their call, that's the new developer. So hopefully, I would like to see that when they do sell it, to put my name down as a person, a contact person for my neighborhood, for the developer to work with, for we can have some say or input in the houses, in type of houses they build. Hopefully, you know, they're not too massive and the setback is going to be, you know, good. And also, I think one more, I think they need to go one more time, and it's getting kind of dry out there, and the weeds are getting a little higher again. Now, the last time they were here, they graded around the perimeter, but I think inside the perimeter is getting kind of overgrown, so we need to address the weeds. And then hopefully, the new developer, they don't, hopefully they relocate the, we got like eight, 10 coyotes living in that orchard, and so hopefully they don't just euthanize them and get rid of them. I'd like to, hopefully they kind of relocate them, or hopefully they'll just go off on their own.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. If you could wrap it up. All right. We're going to move on to telephone comments next.
And we do have two callers in queue. Tamika, can you please send the first caller? Hello, caller, you're now in the meeting. Can you please start with your comment?
Okay. I'm Dana Anderson. I was privileged to be recruited in the mid-'70s to work with a group of Orangevale citizens who organized in the '60s to preserve Orangevale's country life. They were able to form our Orangevale Plan so that our ag rez areas would meld into the residential and into commercial. Even though the major part of our AR zoning is north of Oak, they made a special effort to accommodate and protect the farms that were south of Oak, like the Tomatoes in the South. We feel betrayed that the Tomatoes would want rezoned to the extent watering RV3 and RD4 for Blossom Ridge. Yes, there's one RD2 lot, for a total of 32 lots on that 9.4 acres, or 9.57, I've seen two different things on that. Just as our Orangevale Plan was formulated to accommodate the farm they grew up on, their proposal needs to be changed to fit in with the existing houses. How's he? The zoning and abiding proposal is RD2 to the north and the east, and the churches on the south. There are one or two acre lots directly across Filbert from this proposal. We preserve, we preserve Orangevale's country life, are in favor of rezoning the parcel to RD2 half-acre lots as the northern and eastern boundaries of the project are already zoned RD2. This would allow for 19 homes and blend right in with the existing neighborhoods. A lot of agricultural use is allowed on RD2 zoned area that is not allowed on RD3 and 4, such as horses and livestock, 4H, and future farmers of America are big in Orangevale and with Castro High. The county zoning code, again, states even, you can even keep one pig on a lot that's of 2,000, 20,000 square feet. Now that, now that the almost 10-acre AR2 zoned property at 6702 Filbert has been sold, it is very possible that a similar rezone would be requested, which could remove another 10 acres of agricultural land from Orangevale. Please respect and support our Orangevale community and Orangevale Plan and deny the proposed Blossom Ridge rezon, which would destroy more of our agricultural county life. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Please send the next caller. Hello, caller, you're now in the meeting. Please start with your comment.
This is Jennifer Darich from Preserve Orangeville's Country Life, and I would just like to say that we have been talking to neighbors and also observing the transfer of properties within our area of AR2, as well as the other properties that, like Mr. Tommages. And the way of living that we have out here has provided a renaissance of quails, coyotes, mallards, and turtles and hawks. And even though I agree that there should be checks and balances within the planning tour of what people do to get approved for things, we already have an Orangeville community plan, and we've been told that it would be too expensive to update it. So unless the county wants to update it instead of raising salaries, then we should stick to the Orangeville community plan. And most persons who want to live our lifestyle are happy to comply with our existing plan, which our CPAC unanimously gave their disapproval to this particular project of Mr. Tommages. We are already being severely affected by the city of Folsom and Placer County. The traffic is getting unbearable, but yet, if we take our own streets within our community of the place called Orangeville, it's a slice of heaven that will be destroyed if we allow the existing other open properties, like Mr. Tommages, to use his ability to change the zoning on his parcel, they will use that as a precedent to do to any of their parcels, because that's only fair. Our wildlife is abundant, as well as the animal husbandry, thank God. We are having people move in with mamas, we're having people with miniature donkeys and horses, and not just in the AR2 area. All around us, people are starting to realize that space and tranquility can be had, and we can be good stewards of the entire country life by allowing people to adhere to what our plan is.
Could you make your closing comments, please?
Yes. Many large parcels are being farmed and giving future Orangeville people and Farough's residents an appreciation that you cannot find anywhere else in Sacramento County, except possibly Out Grove, though I don't think that they're going in that direction. So I would appreciate it if the Planning Commission would listen to the citizens and as well as our CPAC.
Thank you.
And that concludes our public comments via telephone. Shall I close the queue?
So do we have more on Zoom?
We do, but we have checked with them via chat several times, and no one has responded.
Okay.
So we feel like we've, I think that we've given them adequate opportunity to respond, or would you, Chair, would you like for me to further try to assess whether or not they'd like to make a public comment?
Let's take the in-house comment, and then if you want to just take it off, they should be listening, so right now, we'll just say, hey, if you want to make a public comment, and you're listening to this, please respond to the clerk and the comments, so we can put you in the queue.
Absolutely. Please feel free to dial 916-875-2500.
And I'm sorry if I butcher your name, but I think it's Steve B. Your comments, come on down and share us, you've got two minutes.
Good afternoon, good evening. I live on, my name is Steve Beerke. Been an Orangeville resident since 87?
Yep.
87? Same house, same wife. And we have undergone quite a bit of transformation since we moved in. There was orchards surrounding the property that we purchased was one of the reasons we bought. Well, right after, about 10 years after we moved in, the Windham, Cape Windham project went in, and about 14 acres got turned into houses, and we were basically told one thing and got something else. So this time around, we're a little bit more cynical of, you know, the development, and we are concerned mostly for drainage issues, because our property is located, just happens to be about the lowest spot in the entire area on that particular stretch of Filbert Avenue. So we get inflows from three different directions. Now, Cape Windham made some concessions, but in 95, we had water in the house, and the water came not only from the direction of this proposed development, but it circled around and came down Filbert Avenue and then backed up to the front door. So my concerns are with this new development, you're talking about berms and retaining walls, but in those 100-year floods that we get, seems like every 10 years, the water finds its way to our house. We've had the county come out and do elevation checks with a surveyor. The sill on our front door is one inch higher than the road base. One inch doesn't give us a whole lot of ability to stem any kind of water movement. So my concern is that, I've heard a lot of talk about this new development, you know, trying to take care of the drainage problems, but if the water comes roaring down Filbert Avenue, it will find its way into our house. So I'm actually concerned that we're not getting streets, or gutters, and sidewalks, and a hookup to the city drain system, because you're talking about surface water still, and that means that we're still going to be in a vulnerable position. Okay, I'm wrapping it up. This time around, because where we are, in the pecking order of this development, we will make sure that, that if somebody does not take us into consideration, we will take legal courses to ensure that we get adequate compensation for the problems created by this new development. That's all I got to say.
Thank you so much for being here.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments.
You're welcome.
All right, do we have any other action on the Zoom callers this evening?
And we do not.
Okay, no problem. We'll go ahead and close the queue.
Will do.
At this time, I'd like to invite the applicant back up to address the public comments made this evening.
Yes, just a reminder that in that area, the zoning is also RD5 catty corner to us, and then there's some larger lots, or smaller lots along Filbert, right at the corner of Greenback as well. And then, again, there was a drainage study completed, and we are putting in a detention basin that is going to collect the water from, the majority of the water from the site to improve drainage from this property. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, and that will be it.
Sure. Questions for Mr. Wiley? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
All right, so we'll open it up to deliberation. Anyone want to kick us off this evening? All right, I'll kick us off this evening. We, I guess we'll start with staff. Any other comments after a public comment? Anything on there that you guys want to address before I dive in?
Just more of, Jessica Brandt, just more of an administrative item. You are welcome to incorporate the conditions that were drafted by the neighbors and the applicant in your recommendation, or you're just welcome to recommend that the board consider them, and we can include them in the package either way, unless I'm incorrect, Bill.
Sure, you're making a recommendation, so your recommendation to the board can be, yes, include these new conditions, or don't. Just for the record, I'll say, you know, if you've read these, they don't really give much, there's not much for the county to do. It requires the owner applicant to seek, is the word, terminology, an agreement with the adjacent neighbors, some of the adjacent neighbors, and to work out their own agreement. So there's, in terms of enforcement, there's not a requirement for the owner and the neighbors to finalize an agreement. So all we can do is the county is really just ask the applicant, did you talk to them again? That's pretty much all there is for us. After that, it's just, it's a private negotiation. Some of what's in there just duplicates what's already in our existing conditions. It talks about the improvements that will be required pursuant to our drainage plan. But just so you know, that's, I mean, that's my take on it.
Thank you. All right, well, I'll kick us off. You know, we had heard this once before, and I made some comments then, I mean, I'm still feeling similar to that today, is that this is an area in between RD2 and higher-density developments, some of which are catty corner to this development, some of which are zoned AR2 and RD2, but are clearly nonconforming and smaller lots that were there while the AR2 development was there, or the AR2 zoning was there. So when I look at it, I think the density is appropriate. You know, if I kind of run through the numbers, the original application of RD3 and 5 had 43 units. The community and the CPAC came back with 19 units, or approximately 19 units of RD2, depending on whether you wanted a nonconforming house. Here we are today, we're at 32 units, so we kind of met in the middle. I would have loved to not take three years to meet in the middle, because we need houses. That being said, here we are, and I think that it's a compromise, like all things land use, and I'm supportive of the process and the compromise that went into it. I'm also supportive of drainage issues being worked out between neighbors. And so I would be supportive of the conditions, since the applicant has said they're supportive of them, and they were worked out, and the other folks that are here this evening are saying, hey, I'm supportive of them too. So I have no, no issues encouraging neighbors to work together to solve drainage issues like I do with my neighbors in my neighborhood when things back up, and to ask the county for help and assistance as needed. So my view on it is that I'm supportive of staff recommendation, and I'm supportive of including the conditions in Attachment 15 and recommending approval to the Board of Supervisors. Any other comments or discussion on this one before I call for a vote?
I guess I just have one quick question for the staff. This has been a very intricate and long process, and I really appreciate your guys' attention in detail. With a new slew of laws that the state has required, a new legislation has required local agencies like ours to really meet certain permitting standards or timelines, are we at all, as a county, as the local AHJ, so Authority Having Jurisdiction, are we at all at any trouble or concern that we may not be meeting either AB 2334 or the housing accountability law? There has been a lot of language from both the neighbors and the applicants and folks here, but I'd also like to point out that we, as a county, also must meet California statutes that does provide guidelines and very, very strong accountability measures for the county to be able to get projects that meet certain standards and certain deadlines. And so I just want to hear from the staff whether or not this specific issue may be in trouble with either AB 6 or AB 2334. There's a number of different timelines in there, but if I'm way off base, please let me know as well. Thank you.
Well, I'll take a first crack at that. Commissioner Borja, Todd Smith, Planning Director. As it relates to the Housing Accountability Act, I don't think there's an issue in this case, because the zoning of the site, the existing zoning is AR2, and so there's not a disconnect between the zoning and the general plan designation. We are seeing that in some other projects, but not this one. I think that staff have done the best job that they can in moving the project forward. Obviously, the applicant has been sensitive, as Commissioner Rathel indicated, sensitive to the community concerns relative to transportation, drainage, hydrology, et cetera, and went to some effort to make revisions to the project, and obviously, that takes a bit of time to make sure all the technical studies match over time what the project changes are. I think finally, I would add, we do have to, and have in this case, completed the environmental analysis, as well as responses to comments, that also takes time. But I think we are, with this project, consistent and complying with applicable legislation.
Yeah, if I could add on to that, in terms of the Housing Accountability Act, the newer statutes are really, the streamlining provisions are directed towards multifamily and affordable housing, which this is not. There are some pre-existing provisions about development projects that come in and are fully compliant with the existing zoning, and they don't require a change in the zoning, they don't require any kind of variance or exception, but that's not what we have here, because it requires a rezon, et cetera, et cetera. So, yeah, it doesn't really, the housing accountability doesn't come into play for this one.
All right, my only other comment is I'd really like to see a sidewalk there between those, even if it's, you know, the easiest time to do these things is when we have trucks on site and folks on site, and then we won't end up with a gap that everybody walks through anyway, and the neighbors are upset that they're walking through their front yard. So let's do it while we have trucks on site, if we all can, so. And if you could please call for a vote.
And Commissioners Borja?
Yes.
Rathel?
Yes.
Corona Salvecano?
Yes.
And Wong?
Yes.
And the motion carries, and with amendments. Let me be more specific, I apologize. So including conditions in Attachment 15 for the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors in addition to the staff recommendation.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Very clear. All right, with that, we'll move on to the Planning Director's report.
Not much to report this evening. I think we are, as I mentioned last time I was here, we are seeing the next upcoming agendas somewhat full, a handful of items for the next several meetings, so actually, three to four items for the next several meetings, so it's going to be a lot of action this summer, for better or worse.
All right, any miscellaneous scheduling items this evening?
Jessica Brandt, just my usual request, that if you know that you may be absent, if you could please let us know, so we make sure we have a quorum, since, as Director Smith mentioned, we do have a number of projects, and some of them are wireless facilities, which are on shot clock restrictions. So we need to hustle those through and get them completed with their hearing process. Anything in July or August, please let us know.
And then in confirmation, I believe Commissioner Wong will be absent on the 10th?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, we're going to move on to general public comment. We have a few off-agenda items or commenters this evening. We'll take Vanessa Burke up front. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Vanessa Burke. I live at 7145 Santa Juanita Avenue, and across the street from my property, there is a new center that is going to go in, and my major concern is there's been a very large lack of transparency, poor communication with the community members. I have a preschool on the portion of my property, and my children attend that. I am within 500 feet of this proposed site, yet there's been no formal communication what's been going on across the street, just a lot of people working all the time. The school on my property takes walks up and down Santa Juanita to go see the get to go see the goats, they go see the mules, they see the strawberry fields. And I'm worried about the traffic and the population that's going to be coming to our street, that my children are no longer going to be able to walk up and down the street. I know that we have a need in our community for people with mental disabilities to get services that they need. But we, right now, have three vulnerable populations in my little spot that we're currently, have group facilities that are currently serving our population. And my, what we need to do is we need to work together to leverage our diversity within Orangevale so that we don't have them all on one street altogether, because the psychological safety of the members that are already living there is valuable, and we need to be protected. We have young children, and they need protection advocacy. So that's why I'm here today.
Thank you so much, Ms. Burke. Next up, we've got Catherine Wheatfield.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm sure you're all familiar with my name, as I have made numerous emails and phone calls to various departments. First order that I'd like to address is the OVC PAC meeting that was scheduled for July would normally fall on the 4th. I see that on the website, you put it down as scheduled on the 4th. We need a better date than that, obviously, because that's our national holiday. So if you could reschedule that for us. Also, I'm here to request that you revoke their use permit, as they have been issued a violation this month for grading. Their use permit specifically states no grading, which they have been doing for the last three months. This has been documented. They have had a violation issued. That was issued on the 7th of June. They continued their grading up until Juneteenth, this last Monday, last Monday, week from now, or week from today. And they have broken stipulations of their use permit. They've changed the site plan with the construction that they have done that is unpermitted. Compliant is the last word that I would use to describe these owners and the general contractor, Wyatt Knotts. On the 21st of June, one of their workers threatened me. He threatened to have his friends come over and shoot me when I was on my porch and my children were sleeping inside. I called the police and told them that this had happened, that he had fled the scene, and they didn't send anyone out. That means that I was never able to make a report. I called dispatch on Friday. They told me that was within his free speech. I spent two hours at the sheriff's office today, standing in front of the gate at headquarters, waiting for a dispatch officer to meet with me. They never came. They finally showed up at my house, five minutes before I left for this meeting to take my statement, at which time they again told me he has a right to do that. I tried to reach out to the owners of the property, Norbert and Vicki, on their personal cell phones. When Vicki answered and heard that it was me, she immediately hung up. I contacted their general contractor, Wyatt Knotts. He told me it wasn't his problem, and he wasn't worried about it. He also would not give me the name of the landscaper who employed that person who threatened me.
Miss Wheatfield, if I could have you make your closing comments.
Essentially, no one over there has any intention of being held accountable. They are not compliant. They have been issued violations. And it's my understanding that the Planning Commission and the Planning Director, at this point, can revoke their use permit. And I would please, on behalf of my community, ask you to do that. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down this evening.
And for the record, Chair Rathel, the cancellation agenda for the Orangevale CPAC meeting on July 4th was actually published on June 14th.
Got it. Yeah, once you open up the agenda online, it shows canceled. But it's a little confusing if you don't open the PDF. It still says 7:04 at 6:30 in the link. But once you open it up, it does show that. Next up, we have Michael Stickney.
Good evening. This is regards to 7104 Santa Juanita. Agree with the two previous speakers. These people moved, started working in March without permits, continue to work. It says no grading, but they continue to grade. I'm concerned about the sewage system that we don't have. We have septic tanks out there. I'm not sure that whatever they're going to put in there qualifies. They're not a very cooperative, informative people. I think the permit ought to be removed, because we don't know what they're putting in. It used to be a facility for residential care. What we've heard is they're going to put in 50, 75 people with drug issues and traffic, and we're just concerned. So I think the permit ought to be pulled and resubmitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. All right, any other public comments this evening?
We do have one person on the phone. Timmy, can you please send the public commenter? Hello, caller. You're now in the meeting. Can you please mute the meeting in the background and start with your public comment?
Yes. Good evening. My name is Shepherd Johnson. I live directly across the street from 7104 Santa Juanita Avenue. And I concur with the previous speakers. What we have here is a new buyer who's a bad actor. She's been advised to contact this building department in writing before they start any construction and grading. And after having that condition clearly stated to them, they just blatantly ignored it. And so for us to trust them or count on them, including the Planning Commission, to think that these people are going to honor their agreements is unwarranted. They're bad actors. I'm happy to have the property used as a proper zone, under the current zoning, which is 20 beds per the site, I think. And that's, I agree with the neighbors that we need to have that use permit voided and have them start from scratch and held accountable. It also, the use permit also provides for avoiding based on a nuisance. And I think that construction and grading and threatening neighbors is a valid nuisance for avoiding the use permit. The use permit language also states that if the property is unused for three years or more, it can be, it's automatically voided. I've talked to Ms. Gutierrez about it, and I'm currently working on that avenue to void the use permit. So I guess at this point, I'd like the Planning Commission to take this issue seriously, know that this issue is coming. Ideally, I'd like to put the voiding of the use permit on the agenda for the Planning Department, for Planning Commission now, so we can proactively work on getting this situation corrected instead of being sort of behind the eight ball with an application by the owner. And I'm not sure, I know how to do that, but I would like to work with Ms. Gutierrez to see if we can do that and bring, get some factual information to you so that you can take the proper action and protect our community.
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you very much, and we really need your help. This is a very serious issue, and please take it seriously. Thank you.
Okay, and that concludes our public comments for this evening.
Sounds good. I'll just make a quick comment that we really can't give you any feedback on unagendized items. The staff is aware of the issue. We will definitely work with them and address it as quick as we can. And if it is appropriate, we'll have them put it on the agenda in the future. So thank you so much for coming down and informing us about the issue. We appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Any closing comments? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 6:32. Have a good night, everyone.